Item number ten is a special call meeting. Discuss, consider, say, the nature of special call meetings to pay fiscal year 2017 payables. Okay. We've got... The first meeting in October is actually the eleventh, because Columbus State is on the tenth. And the next meeting is the twenty-fifth. Next meeting this month is the twenty-sixth.
We cannot pay fiscal year 2017 payables until October first. And that's a Saturday. We have the appraisal district support due on October first. And if it's not there, we're going to have to pay a late fee. But this year, there's nothing we can do about. But I would suggest on the third, having a special meeting and paying the bills we already have.
Sure, would you look on the calendar and let's see what we've got going on October the third. That's Monday. About a week after I... We're leaving twenty-sixth.
Oh, what?
Yeah. So we can have a nine o'clock meeting at a better time of the day than nine.
Okay. So we have a motion then to have a special permission for meeting on the third of October at nine eighty. Or the second. Okay. Motion, all. Okay. Motion made, taken, all in favor, say aye. And propose some time. Okay. Sure, if you'd like us to know when that's up for the third. And we need to follow the agenda on the twenty-ninth. Item number eleven is employee wellness. Discuss, consider providing footshot clinic for employees.
We have, over the last several years, provided a footshot clinic for employees. The county pays our employees to have their footshots. They were twenty-five dollars a shot. And just wanting to see if it's important for life for us, we will have to schedule that. Pay for the employee shots.
Put it on the tab, please. Motion made, accepted. To allow the footshot clinic to pay employees. All in favor, say aye. And propose some time.
Judge, I will schedule that for October fifth, from one-thirty to four o'clock. If I can schedule the room on the first floor, that's where it will be. And in the past, we allow employees to go to their storage, but they cannot make it back down.
Will you send out a notice?
Yes, sir. Can I have a... You know where she goes.
Item number twelve is a demand. Discuss, consider a demand to revert contract between Superior Vision and texture in the county.
This is for our Superior Vision contract. It's a renewal, and they're asking for us to sign a contract. Renewal issue.
I have given results from block vision, Superior Vision myself. I think that was always happening today. Anybody who hasn't come yet, so we're making a motion to... Add this a demand and allow them to sign. Motion made, accepted, all in favor, say aye. And propose some time. Okay. Item number thirteen is adopt the budget. Adopt fiscal year 2017 budget. About copy, we'll sign.
I do have a couple of things to go over. There were two changes that were made after commissioner's court. And I want to bring both of those up on page twenty-three, which is the point house maintenance budget. Johnny Gray is doing a lot of traveling to pick up supplies. Things we can't get here. He was going to Abilene to get. He's running around Eastland quite a bit. And I've talked to Judge Fields. I've added a travel line to reimburse him for his mileage, five hundred dollars. And I reduced building repair, five hundred dollars. That goes seventy-four thousand, five hundred. I reduced it to seventy-four thousand, but that five hundred is practice. And the building repair is zero-one-zero, five-one-zero, three-six-zero. And travel, the line that I added, zero-one-zero, five-one-zero, four-two-six.
Any questions, comments on that? No change overall, just give some comments. Hope to have a motion then to make those two changes within budget. I've got a line up. And motion made, accepted, all in favor, say aye. And propose some time.
And then there is a change to the indigent medical... Indigent health budget, page thirty-seven. At the last meeting, I said I would get Randy Clark and try to estimate eight percent and ten percent. And kind of went back and forth. Eight percent of gross revenue tax levy, what he calculated right now, came in at three-hundred-ninety-one thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty dollars, thirty-two cents. Ten percent came in at four-hundred-eighty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars, ninety cents. Now, this is an estimate. It's not a fixed number. He said that the ceiling that was adopted would affect it a little bit. He didn't have any of that in. And we are required by law, and this is just a medical expenditure. So in what you're looking at, it would be from physician services through hospital outpatient to spend that eight percent. Judge Fields and I talked. I would like to put four-hundred thousand in there. And the budget you're looking at right now is four-hundred thousand in those expenditures. That gives us about nine thousand leeway when we do have a fixed number. And he doesn't have to do that until November. So the total, four-hundred-and-thirteen, eight... Four-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars does reflect four-hundred thousand in the medical expenditures.
That's on item four-five, which is...
Yes, sir.
Then we approach the final next. Can we have a motion then to... Change the money in this department. And by the same, all in favor, say aye. And propose some time.
We need to discuss the last one. On page... Fifty-nine. Line zero-two-five, seven-zero-zero, zero-two-zero, transfer to Rose and Bridge Fund. There is one-hundred-seventy-seven thousand, seventy-three dollars and nine cents in there right now. Do we see an additional... Sixty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. My email was last week sometime, ready to found it. And that's for precinct one, two... Two, three, and four. But I need to make sure that the amount we have in our checking account right now is in this line. So if we could change that line to two-hundred-and-twenty thousand... Two-hundred-and-twenty dollars... Let's go back. Two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, sixty-four cents.
If that's the case, two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, sixty-four cents. And that change is the line item to zero-two-five, seven-zero-zero, zero-two...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's on page fifty-nine. And then, and you've broken bridge fund. Revenue's page. Which is page forty-three. We also need to change line at the bottom, zero-two-zero, three-nine-zero, zero-two-five, transfer from grants fund to that same... Two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, sixty-four cents.
Do we have a motion to make that change on item zero-two-zero-three, item zero-zero-two, by transfer of grant funds, page forty-four, which is... To two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, sixty-four cents.
So I want to make a motion for the first part of it, in the O two O. Because we have her on that. First on page fifty-nine, she brought to you.
Good work, ma'am. So can we have one motion then for... One is revenue side, one is expense side. So can we add a motion to make the changes on page fifty-nine, which is zero-two-five, seven-zero-zero, zero-two-zero, transfer to Rose and Bridge Fund. And on page forty-three, make the change on zero-two-zero, three-nine-zero, zero-two-five, transfer from grants fund. Welcome to Jackson, on two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, sixty-four cents. Does that make any sense?
Because it shows one-seventy-seven, oh-seventy-three, oh-nine.
Sixty-two thousand.
Well, we have two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty dollars, forty-one cents.
Oh, so there's more than what I was showing.
In the account right now.
Okay. I was trying to make that add up, that hundred-seventy-seven, and I couldn't.
Well, let me verify that number. Report today.
One-seventy-seven plus sixty-two.
Yeah.
I think there's probably something I'm not certifying. Yes, grants fund is showing two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty dollars, forty-one cents right now. I just want to make sure I have everything in the checking account in next year's budget. I'll figure the rest of that out. I'll worry next week.
Any other questions or comments? We've got a motion expected before to make the two changes, transfer incomes, say aye. And all in favor, say aye.
Do you have a motion?
No, I don't have a motion.
And we'll have one.
I thought we had a motion taken, we didn't start this question.
No, we never got to motion. I think he just jumped in. It's Robert's fault.
Yeah, it's my fault.
Do you have what we need?
Yes, sir. We're good.
And any more up there?
That's all I have right now.
Lot of news?
Yes, sir. After this point, it will have to be emergency to change it. Or assert protection.
Okay. We've got the budget before us. Budget lifted here. The adopt the budget and then we'll lower the taxes. Anybody have any other questions or comments before we ask the adopt the budget? As always, I would like to say thank you to the commissioner for working through this process. We have elected officials, especially to write our staff, to lead this huge, multi-country process together. I just appreciate so much. Captain Keith Spelling. The minutes and all the effort from the end. So I members appreciate my humble disease, my cancer, my life, but I'm grateful. Do we have a motion then to adopt the fiscal year 2017 budget, there's a question. We've got a motion to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2017. Impose discussion. Take the made, all in favor, say aye. Aye as well. Is it unanimous? Do you have a question, time, or do you want to...
And...
I want to get all of them, so we can...
Oh! Well, she sent a paper clip.
Did she have...
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, somewhere there's a paper clip over there, too. Lucky born paper clip.
Thank you.
I think, Judge, the tax rate is the level first can find everything.
Better than before, we signed the budget lifted, we need to move on to the...
Yes, sir.
Item number fourteen is actually ready. So it's 2016 taxes, and I always confuse it with the year, especially when we have to do the 2016 taxes for fiscal year 2017. Further discussion, comment, questions?
I guess it's the language.
It's the language. Anybody want to make the motion to adopt the...
I move this property tax rate to be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of fifty cents, which is effectively a four percent increase to the tax.
What is our motion? Do we have a second? Make some expression. All in favor, say aye. Aye as well. Is it unanimous? Okay. All right. At this point, we need to...
Sure. And there are signatures on pages two and five, and we can go, we can note, right?
Have you been...
I'm looking at this.
I don't have the one I did.
So...
We have no more of our... You're getting on later for me.
I am.
When you started doing that, I'm not responding. Probably gonna need to be responding.
Just, I am.
I really do think of like, work through them, just modeling the process.
It does seem to be very...
So much people. Thank you. Okay. That takes us down item fifteen, which is nine-one-one update, block dispatch update. I don't have anything on item one. Dispatch share anything from your perspective?
No, sir.
Share anything on item one addressing?
No.
They're working on it. Yeah, because they come by and ask me who I was over there.
At the bar?
Yeah, the bar.
Really?
Yeah.
Was it somebody in West Coast?
I just lay with it, and I picked up. It's a nine-one-one person beside me.
Oh, was it person in West Coast contract?
Yeah. She was going around verifying everybody's address.
Oh, you got two. You still take what you want, you know? Two-eighteen, two-eighteen-two-two. Anybody have anything with dispatch? Is there? All right, nothing? Item sixteen up here, I'm trying to burn man, because burn man is off. Archit County, a pretty good rainstorm, Saturday. We've been handling it soft today, it can be... One of those... We got, Mark? We're gonna figure that one through. It's a long way to finish. But that one ain't bad for the conversation. Does anybody want to make a motion to adopt the burn man? I would say it's been pretty dry in the alley, and so...
Eighty-six percent change that Thursday all the way through middle next week.
It's gonna take us time, we'll be...
Exactly what I said, too, Judge.
Anybody wants to make a motion to adopt the burn man? So we'll go on. Item seventeen is personnel matters. I feel there's something here.
I have a report. Period reported is August nineteenth through September eighth. New hires, one full-time community supervision officer in adult community supervision corrections department. And two terminations, one full-time jail guard and one full-time deputy sheriff.
Anyone else? We have a motion then to accept personnel report, that's it. Motion made, accepted, all in favor, say aye. And propose some time. Okay. Item number eighteen is budgetary corporate matters. Eighteen A is suspension business way move.
Here, on the three. The first one is eighty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars, forty-one cents received from Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Pool. It went into the health reimbursement account fund, revenue insurance surplus line. And there is no associated expenditure for it this fiscal year. And this is the 2015 surplus that we discussed during budget hearings. So it's just going into that fund to be used next fiscal year. The next one is three-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. It was transferred from grants fund to general fund. It's going to the general fund, transfer from grants fund revenue line. And there are no associated expenditures. This is the theme of reimbursement for seventy-five percent of our deductible for the hail damage in 2015 to the roofs. And the next one is twelve dollars and eighty-three cents from Studentville Medical and Surgical Clinic. It went to general fund, indigent health reimbursement revenue line. And the associated expenditure line is hospital outpatient in the indigent health budget for the same twelve dollars and eighty-three cents.
Any questions or comments on these three items of additional revenue? We can add a motion then to certify the additional revenue. Just a second. Motion made, accepted, certify additional revenue, again, all in favor, say aye. And propose some time. Change B is emergency minutes.
No emergency minutes.
Eighteen C is item adjustments.
There are two pages, line item adjustments. And these are adjustments within budgets. Circumcision additional revenue from last commissioner's court. Actually, there are three pages. On page three, towards the top, the contingency, the Rose and Bridge contingency, oh-two-zero, six-nine-five, three-six-three. I moved forty thousand from contingency materials to precinct three materials. And that is the last of the emergency line that was declared for the roads.
Any questions or comments about the line item adjustments? Is this one of the... Maybe one coming to you, new coming to you?
Yes, it is. You'll notice in precinct one... But I will go ahead and tell you all that happened, so you know.